2024 zoning board of appeals meeting. My name is Mike Leary, I'll be sitting in for my Mr. May, our chair president. And I'm gonna have our clerk read the first case, which is 4121.
Thank you. Case number 412. What? Sorry, that was on the one, one, two, four. Case 4121. The Plymouth zoning board of appeals on the zoning bylaw will hold a public hearing in the great hall, town hall, 26 Court Street, Plymouth, Mass. On Monday, May 6, 2024, at 7:00 PM to hear the petition of Philip Baker requesting a special permit required per section 203-9C to expand a pre-existing non-conforming structure and construct additions on the property of 8 Washington Street, shown as lot 162Z on plat 22 of the assessor's maps dated January 1, 2023, in the R20S zone. The petitioner or his or her representative and any other person desiring to be heard on this matter should be, should appear at the time and place designated.
Okay. Sitting on this case will be Mr. Wallace, Mr. Conroy, Mr. O'Reilly, myself, Mr. Pete Conroy, and, huh? Oh, wait a minute, no, that's right. You're not on this, you're on the next. I did say, yeah, I did say. Oh, there you go. You ready, Kevin? Would you read?
I just read.
Oh, okay. All right, and who will be presenting on this? Make sure the green light's on and.
Yeah. I'm Dick Rockwood, my company's Rockwood Design, stepping in for Philip Baker. We did the architectural work, work of I love David. Oh, there it is, yeah. There you go. I'm Dick Rockwood, my company's Rockwood Design, we did the architectural work, I'm stepping in for Philip Baker. We are here because we have a non-conforming structure with, looking for a special permit. The dark outlined areas in black, that rectangle in the middle of the drawing is a second-story addition. We are not, that we're requesting, we're not getting any more non-conforming than what we are, which is the right side of the property, if you were standing on Washington Street, is a non-conforming side. We're going over the existing structure. It's a 25 and a half foot by 16 foot second-story addition. There's also a small 4 by 8 balcony that is pretty much on the north side of that structure. That does go over the setback line. The neighbor on that side is all in favor of it. This was also prevented at the, presented it with the planning board, and they approved it and didn't have any issues with that balcony. There's also another small addition down where the chimney is towards the street, that's a 4 foot by 12.3 foot one-story addition that we're proposing. So.
Okay.
Yeah?
Okay, any questions from board members? Ed? Who's on it? Tom? Pete? Okay. Yeah, I don't think there's much to it. Everything looks good. I noticed you did give us the drywall.
Yes, on this plan.
Yes, on the smaller plan, yeah.
Right.
Okay, so that'll be included on the plan you'll file?
Yes.
Okay.
Understood.
Anything else? Wood minutes, no? Okay, well, we might as well just take care of it right now. So, um. Oh, yeah, you almost forgot that. Public, anybody want to comment on this from the public? Oh, okay, bring it back to the board and. Do I hear a motion?
I'll move to approve case number 4121 with the three conditions from the planning board.
Yep. Yeah, well, we could remove, yeah, we could remove that one.
Okay.
Do I hear, oh, you got the second, okay, all in favor? You were all set.
Great, thank you very much, Tom.
Okay, we'll go to the next case now, which is case number 4116, Citizens Federal Union, credit union. There's no reason to read.
Who's on this one?
And seated on this case will be Phil, Pete, myself, Kevin, and. Mr. Conroy. All set.
Bill Shaw from Associated Engineers, last time we were here was March 18th. We had a set of plans and a response to the DPW that we submitted. They've come back with what they had, and we have either completed or satisfied all of their conditions, or conditions ought to be satisfied upon a building permit application. The only other thing that we've done is, is we had this license agreement for the right-of-way developed, submitted to our attorney and to the bank. The bank's attorney asked that the, the agreement be in perpetuity, in other words, not be renewed every five years, but run with the land, and to, that every five years $1,500 would be submitted to the town. That was negotiated back to town council, and town council rejected that completely. So what we did is we moved all of the plantings out of the right-of-way, so that there are no plantings in the right-of-way at all, so there's no need for a maintenance agreement to do it. And John Henson is here, who developed that plan, and I'd like to turn it over to John, and he can show you what he did. And then, I think probably we're, we're ready to answer any other questions you might have.
Good evening, John Henson, landscape architect on the project. And when we were first before you, we had a street tree planting proposed, and it went along Commerce Way in this location here, there were a couple trees in this area, and there were a few more in this area, in the industrial park road right-of-way. And those were the primary locations of vegetation proposed for the right-of-way. As Bill mentioned, when the issue came up, or the concern came up about material in the right-of-way, ultimately what we've done, and our client has graciously consented to removing the trees that were slightly into the right-of-way in this location and this location, and we relocated them onto the bank property in this area here. So in terms of quantity of vegetation, nothing has changed. The material that was originally proposed is still there, it's just been located on to the bank property. And there's, in addition to that, there's a note down here instructing the contractor not to plant anything into the right-of-way. So in terms of location on plan and by directive in the note, we have removed material from the right-of-way.
Is that it?
That, unless you have questions.
Go ahead.
Bill Shaw, just on the, the agreement, the license agreement from the town, it says there's an exhibit A.
Yes.
Which we have not, we don't have, unless that's the one that we got last time.
No, no, exhibit A is actually a showing of the right-of-way. In other words, what they did is they redlined the right-of-way.
But we don't have it.
All, I don't think you do.
No.
I'm not sure if it's.
But this, this has all been signed by the selectman?
There you go, there's exhibit A.
Is this all signed by the selectman?
No. We don't need, we, we're not gonna plant anything in that area, and we're not going to need the license agreement.
Well, you're still in the right-of-way, though, actually.
No, absolutely not. Everything has been pulled out of the right-of-way.
You, just your driveway?
Well, yeah, the driveway, but it's, it was the planting that was the subject of the ma, the maintenance and licensing agreement. Taking care of the trees, watering the trees, replacing the trees, grass, mowing, that sort of thing. And I think the reason for the discussion is that without an agreement, there's a discussion as to who takes care of that. In other words, the bank plants it, does the town then take care of it? Well, now, because it's all been moved on to the bank property, it's their maintenance problem there, they handle everything, and there is no requirement that the town get involved with that.
Okay, but, but you can use their right-of-way without any okay?
Oh, I can, I've got, I've got the right to drive, my driveway, my utilities, the rest of that is indicated on the, the DPW reports, but the issue of planting, right, is really what was, came, came to the forefront here. It was a matter of who is going to take care of those plants, and how is that guaranteed? And I think it's because there's some history concerning who, who does take care of the plants in a right-of-way that the town owns? Is it the people who have bought, or does the town have to deal with that? So we pulled everything out, and we take care of our own plantings.
So you were, there, there's a right-of-way that the town uses for drainage, that was the purpose originally of the right-of-way?
No, the purpose of the right-of-way is for all purposes for what roads are used for in the town of Plymouth.
So egress and ingress was the reason for the right-of-way originally?
Not, not that, that's too thin. Egress, ingress, utilities, right-of-way indications, plowing, maintenance, all of that stuff. There's, there's a myriad of things that, that go into that, it's not a narrow thing.
So now, the bank is not on the right-of-way at all with anything?
With any planting, no. We have town sewer we're looking for, and town water, which the town, it's in your report, and that's, that's fine, and we have access because we have a right to our frontage, so we have a driveway, that's it.
So why do we have this license agreement in front of us?
I wanted you to see a copy of it, because I was asked last time, you didn't have it. You had, you didn't see what it looked like.
Well, what was happening is, we had a right-of-way, and you were going on top of the right-of-way, so either, and this is your prior submission, and either when you're dealing with a town with a right-of-way, we have to get the AOK from the town to go on top of their right-of-way, which is either, just listen.
I'm listening.
It was supposed to either be through an easement, or if that was gonna run with the land, or it was gonna be through a license, which would be a term of years, and now you're back saying we don't need any of it.
That's right, we don't. And, and that's the point. The reason for the request for the license had to do with the maintenance of, of, of the landscaping. And if you read that license, that's what it speaks to in each page, only to that. They know that we can have a driveway and we have frontage, they know that we can have town sewer provided, we have the sewer department, okay, and they know that we can have water, provided we have the water departments, okay. That's it. It's, it's like any other project, this project was unique because we planted within the right-of-way, and that's what this was all about.
Bill, what about this here, goes like that?
Yep.
Is this, town is over here and?
No, no, what you just went around is the right-of-way. In other words, what happened here was, there was Resnick Road and Commerce Way used to go through in both directions.
Right.
And in order to get a peeweed grant that constructed Commerce Way going in the other direction, they abandoned the two sections of the, of the Resnick Road and the Commerce Way in this direction, and when they did that, they had a piece already constructed, so they left that there, and it was adequate so far, it's been adequate for the doctor's buildings, for the storage facility, all of that. And our traffic report, which we submitted, indicates that it's adequate for the bank. So we, and, and of course, the traffic report also says that they'll retime the lights in order to address that, and I think the building inspector indicated that he wanted to be sure that the retiming occurred before the building permit issued. Because he said he didn't want to have to chase it.
So this, this drive right here?
Yep.
Is in the right-of-way?
Absolutely.
And, but, your client's gonna maintain that?
We have to.
And there is no agreement on that?
No, it doesn't need to be an agreement, we have to keep our driveway open, just like you have to keep your driveway open in your house.
Okay, and then all this other area belongs to the town?
Yes, it does.
And it's just gonna, it's just.
It is what it is currently. You notice that there are trees in that right-of-way going around the corner?
And also on?
Because in past projects, right, they did plant in the right-of-way, and that's many years ago, though, I talk, I think that was OCB, when they did that, they planted several trees through there. And they're taken care of, by the way, by OCB, they, they go down and, and deal with it. And if you notice, on the opposite side of the way, there's a planting field on that left-hand side, that's all small plants and other things, no licensing agreement there, but it is also taken care of by OCB.
Who's OCB?
They're the optical doctors.
All right, thank you. So all this brujah was useless. Because they were in the right-of-way, and that's when we brought it up, now they've taken everything out of the right-of-way, so all the attorney fees and everything relating to this license agreement was useless. So the problem has been mediated because they took, they, they took all their stuff out of the right-of-way.
So it's a drive.
That's okay, though. So, so I'm okay with it, but it's rather odd. But I'm okay with it, because they're not in the right-of-way.
Right. Any other questions? Any public comment? I guess not. Okay, I'll bring it back to you for one last statement or anything.
Thank you very much, we have three special permits that we're asking for, they have to do with, with visibility, with the planting, and the major one is the offset to the canopy on the back of the building, we're like three feet short of the 40 feet, and that's it. And thank you very much.
So if there's no other questions, I'll bring it back to the board? No other questions, okay, thanks.
Thanks.
On the order of condition, I mean, yeah, our condition list, how's everybody feel about, there's quite a few. Bill, are you satisfied with the, you know, the conditional list originally?
We had no objection to any of the conditions that were provided by the planning board or any of the ones that came up with, at the meetings.
Okay. Okay, is everybody satisfied with the conditions, or anything they want to add? No? All right, then I await a motion.
Yes, I'll make the motion to approve case number 4116 with the conditions as listed.
As stated by the.
By the planning board.
Okay, seconded by Phil, and the vote?
All in favor?
All one favor? Okay. Thank you. Okay, so. That one's, okay. And moving on, we're gonna move on to case number 4123, and I'll have the clerk read the advertisement.
Thank you. Case number 4123, the Plymouth zoning board of appeals on the zoning bylaw will hold a public hearing in the great hall, town hall, 26 Court Street, Plymouth, Mass. On Monday, May 6, 2024, at 7:00 PM to hear the petition of Canaan Realty Group, 3 Inc. Sandwich Street condominium, requesting a special permit required per section 203-9C to expand a pre-existing non-conforming use to demolish two-story, two pre-existing non-conforming buildings and construct one new automotive filling station and retail building on the property of 86 and 88 Sandwich Street, shown as lot 23 on plat 51 and 52A of the assessor's map, dated January 1, 2023, in a TC zone. The petitioner or his or her representative and any other person desiring to be heard on this matter should appear at the time and place designated.
Okay, and sitting on this case will be Mr. Wallace, Mr. Conroy, Mr. O'Reilly, Mr. Conroy, and myself. And who's presenting?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, for the record, my name is Hal Chuba, I'm a consulting engineer with offices at 112 State Road in Dartmouth, Massachusetts, and I represent the applicant on this application. The, just to give you a quick summary, what we're here for, we're here for a special permit to expand an existing non-conforming use. The, my client, who owns the gas station on 86 Sandwich, the Canaan, I'm sure you're all familiar with, with the gas station, it's at the corner of Lincoln and Sandwich Street, also had the opportunity to buy the property next door to the east, and that used to be the, the law offices, and in that building, there used to be three commercial condominium units used as offices. Now, the, the two properties combined are approximately half an acre in size, they're in a transitional commercial zoning district, the gas station's not allowed use, it's, is there, it's an existing, pre-existing non-conforming. The office building is in allowed use in the district, though the building is an existing non-conforming in terms of setbacks. Also, on the gas station lot, there is a small convenience store, I'm sure you're all familiar with it, it's about 500 square feet, it's an existing non-conforming structure, too, so it doesn't meet the setbacks. Access to the, to the property is via two existing curb cuts on Sandwich Street, most of the property is, is improved, discovered by impervious surfaces, so my client would like to demolish the two buildings, the 500 square foot building on 86 Sandwich Street, which is the gas station, and 88, which is the office building. That office building is about approximately, approximately 3,600 square feet, and it's a two-story building, it's a kinda like a split ranch, that's the description. So it's got two stories, combined about 3,650 square feet, 500 for the gas station. We propose to demolish both, construct a 2,048 square foot building in the vicinity of the removed office building. The new building would meet all the required setbacks, so we're not asking for any relief on the setback. There will be some site improvements, in terms of parking, we would meet all the parking requirements by zoning. The, we have already existing sewer and water, we'll just extend the, the utilities and improve per DPW requirements to the new building. We also improve, propose improvements to pedestrian circulation, we proposing a, a concrete sidewalk from Sandwich Street to, to connect to the new building. We also have some crosswalks along the westerly portion of the site where the overflow and the employee parking is, to connect to the building, which we didn't have. And by removing the 500 square foot building, you would have more room to maneuver around the pumps. Basically, it's an improvement site, what we proposed, and we're adding landscape around the perimeter of the building, and also especially along the, the westerly side to, to provide more buffer to the butter on the west, and I believe somebody's here tonight that can talk to this. I've been talking to the butters, and we also met with the Plymouth Center Steering Committee, and which they had, they gave us a very good, positive review for this project. We also have the, the report from the planning board, which we had our meeting on April 24th, also that we had a positive recommendation and with conditions. So you have, we, you have several pages of conditions that was recommended by DPW Engineering Fire, so what I did, the reason I gave you a revised plans, I think in your packet you have three sheets, six, five, six, and seven, I believe, or, yes, that were revised. So I did revise the sheets that I could revise before the meeting, and they were appropriate to be revised, based on the recommendation from the planning board and the neighbors and some of the DPW comments. Some of the conditions, they have to be addressed either prior to issuing of the building permit or prior to issuing of the certificate of occupancy. So those comments will be addressed accordingly with DPW, like, providing a survey or, or camera inspection of the sewer line and the, and the water line and all those things that are standards. Just to, so you, you understand the difference between the revised plans that I submitted last week and the one that we're originally submitted with the, with the package? I can, I can go through the, the sheet on this sheet, which is the, the site layout, and I believe that's the, that sheet number four, the changes we're to do, we're, had to do with providing the, the proper dimensions to the parking on the west side of the lot. There were some comments from DP, from engineering and DP, engineering that the parking had to be 10 feet by 18 feet. Also, we did show the, the template for, the fire template for the fire truck, I talked to the fire chief on that, he sent me the template for the, for the fire apparatus, and I put that on the, on the sheet. Also, we provided additional landscape along the westerly property line to provide additional screening from the property. We provided a loading that was from planning, and there was few comments from planning, and also provided the, the pedestrian access from Sandwich Street to, to the property. We also moved the, the dumpster that we show along the northwest corner of the property. We also moved the, the dumpster that we show along the northwest corner of the property, six feet off the property line, as recommended by, by the butter. And we are providing a screening and fencing around that, too. I believe on the next, Colleen, if you don't mind, the, the next is the utility sheet. There was comments from D. P. W. that the proposed utilities were too close to the property line along the easterly side, and they didn't wanna, they didn't want any impact on the adjacent property. So what we did, we moved, we spaced them out, basically, whatever they recommended. And also, they recommended a certain material for the, this is the landscape, so what, no, the one before that, if. The one after, if you don't mind. I think that's the grading plan. So basically, we made the changes on the utilities according to D. P. W. recommendations. And also, they wanted to see the template for the, for the trash truck, picking up the, the dumpster from the back. We did that also on the landscape plan. Again, that's an existing gas station that is there now. It's an existing, non-conforming use. We are increasing the use, and obviously, that's why we're here. But we think that the, the proposed improvements to the site are not more detrimental than what's there now. I think it's a, it's an improvement to what's there now. We propose a nice, attractive building. I think you have the architectural of the building. It looks like a Cape Cod design with, with architectural shingles and, and the roof. And everybody was pleased, from the steering committee to the planning board. And, and we're here to work with the town. We have no objection to any conditions that, that were stipulated with the, with the planning board. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
So they've submitted revised plans to the board. And has engineering had a time to take a look at these revised plans?
They were, they were responsive, wasn't it?
They have not responded to plans. We're gonna set plans to send here. So once there's more plans done, we'll send them in.
So we have a situation which is somewhat on, we usually don't operate this way.
No.
In the normal sense, we first get plans, and the final plans are reviewed by engineering. So from my standpoint, are we premature on even looking at this case as a board? What do you think, Peter? Isn't this odd?
Yeah, this is odd. I, I don't know if we're, we don't, it doesn't usually happen this way, but I, I don't know that it's a problem other than we can't approve it this way.
So we can't approve it because we don't have the final plan?
That's true.
Right.
And we need, as, as Phil might say, that, yeah, we need the, the, we need D. P. W. responses in writing that they're okay with the revisions on the plans. Right? I mean, it's more than I can absorb right now.
So from my standpoint, I'm not ready to vote on it.
No, we're not ready to vote on it.
Okay. Okay, fine. Long as we're the same age.
No, I, I actually had the same question as Ed, so.
I have one that's gonna. Oh, you did? Oh, okay. No, 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 you should, right.
I just have a couple of questions on the, on utilities.
Mm-hmm.
The roof trains, you show them going out towards the dumpster pad to a catch basin. And the plan doesn't show where that catch basin is going to. Is that a dry well or is it?
That's a dry well, correct.
Okay. Is there a detail of that in the plan?
Well, actually, my comment, I'm gonna comment on that, too, because if you look at the demolition plan, you actually have the catch basin on there. It disappears after that. I don't know whether somebody moving the dumpster around just got more interest in the dumpster. But on the demolition plan, you do show that rear catch basin that's on the property now.
Right.
Okay? And it doesn't move forward onto any of the other plans. I don't know if you realize that or not.
It should be. It's not going anywhere.
It's not on there.
Now, I'll make sure, it is on the plan, but I'll make sure it's on the plan.
Right, and, and we would need that in the revised plans. Because I noticed that right away. It's, it's on the demolition, so it looks like it's literally taking it out. And I'd like it on the.
No, no, on a demolition, we show the erosion controls, so we're providing a sack.
I know.
So it doesn't, you don't get.
What I'm getting at saying is you show the, the drainage there.
Yeah.
And then it just totally disappeared on all the new plans, and that's what Phil's saying. It's not on there. So that definitely would have to be changed. Go ahead, Phil.
Yeah, yeah, because also that, your whole lot pitches towards the rear.
Hmm.
And, and there's only that one catch basin, so.
Hmm.
And there's no drainage plan.
Right, there is a catch basin there. No, you're leaving the, the catch basins that are in there now, currently, those are staying where they are, is that what?
You're correct.
Right.
Yeah. My, my client has been at that location for, I think, ten years, over ten years, or around ten years. And he, I asked him, they, I've been there a few times after heavy rains and, like rainstorms, and I, we haven't seen, and I'm sure they, you know, you know more if you live next door. We don't have any issue with the flooding or, but again, I understand this is a concern, and we have, we've agreed to.
So that's gotta be moved forward.
Yeah.
Yeah. And the, is this a new sewer, sewer, sanitary line?
The existing.
This is existing sanitary line or is it new?
Yeah, there's, there's, yeah, there's, there's existing, both. We have a water line and a sanitary line to both connected to the, to the sewer from the building.
But, so these are already existing?
Correct.
Okay. Oh, and I'm not gonna comment more than that. On, on the, on the layout, just one thing was, you, there was a comment from, I think it was the planning board, to show a pathway for pedestrians from the street to the building.
Hmm.
And so you have it on, over in the west side, and then you also show a pathway over on the east side, down around where the parking lot, the, the parking spaces are for employees. So that, is that just for these employees to go down?
Yeah, that, that's employee overflow parking, yes.
Yes, and so that, that, you, you show a painted pathway, and that's only for the employees parking then?
Correct.
Okay.
Crosswalk.
There's only one for pedestrians that's over on the west side, there's nothing over on Lincoln Street?
No, not from Lincoln. Lincoln is, there's a difference in the grade. I think there's a small retaining wall, so you can't really access the property from Lincoln.
Yeah, no, that's, that's fine. I just was asking because on the layout didn't show the, you know, it shows a retaining wall, but, and I just didn't know if that was intended to be pedestrians at both or not. So you answered the question. So that's, those are the only obvious ones that I saw, you know, other than no sign-offs from fire department as well. You did what they asked, but they didn't tell us that they're okay with it.
Colleen, I, I think I had an email from the, from chief, I think, said.
Yeah. Fine, fine, you're all right? Yeah, okay, so it's just the, it's just the engineering department?
Now, D. P. W. wanted the water line straightened out, like, I guess, the other one. So that is on the new plan I see?
Uh, yes. I, I think you should have a copy of the new plan.
I do. It, it only has one short bend in it, so I would have.
Right.
Yeah.
We were trying to keep all, because of the, the, the floor layout, the, the utility room was in the back of the, we didn't wanna bring it through the slab, but we can bring it through the slab instead of going around, so it's fine.
Okay. And so I am gonna, in a couple of minutes, open a public comment, but, so basically, you have to get, you know, the comments from D. P. W. is the main one. The fire department's already in there. So that'd be what we're waiting for, and I definitely wanna have those, our catch basins shown on the, on the site plan. Is there anything else, everybody? What do you, anything you need?
No, no.
Anything you need?
The only thing for me, I just, I just thought that there would be a pathway for pedestrians coming from the east to get up to the building, as well as you have on the west, otherwise people from the east are coming down Sandwich, and they have to walk across the front of the, both driveways to get to the pathway they have in the west, which means they'll just walk through the, you know, the, the filling station area, which is not safe. But they have the. I know they have an elevation difference in the back, is something maybe they should try to figure out.
You're saying, and, and continue that walkway? What, what is, what is that, in the, the corner there, the block? This is deadly for me. What is that right, oh, I got it, right there?
Oh, that, the, in the corner, that's the loading space.
Loading space?
Yeah.
For when they have.
Deliveries.
Deliveries, you know, this merchandise comes in, they're gonna load it there, they're gonna walk it along the pathway into the building.
Hmm.
Okay, and what you're suggesting is if somebody was out here on this street, on Lincoln, that there's no way for them to get into the store without coming around here? Is that what you're saying?
Well, even, well, there's.
Can you keep playing with it? That's really good.
Yeah, you can do it. But that's, that's a retaining wall there, but if they're coming here, they're gonna have to walk across here to get to this point, and then walk up, and then back over the doors. They're gonna go through this, around the cars.
Okay.
And go like that, and back, backing out.
In the past, that has been an issue for us. When that happens, yeah.
So I, I think that's, that needs to be revisited, that's all.
I don't see how you do it, though.
Well, they can try.
They change the loading?
I mean, I, I don't, I don't wanna say, no, you can't do it. I'd like to see if they come up with something.
Well, the problem is, okay, so that green space is behind, there's a wall on Lincoln Street, there's a retaining wall coming up, that's one. Two is that green space they got around, in front of the cars, between that and the road, that has to be there because they have to have a buffer between that transitional commercial. They have to have a buffer of trees between the pocket and the thing.
They got a buffer here.
No, 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 over that corner, the other corner you're talking about.
You can put a buffer, I'm saying, they have one here. You can put a buffer there in a painted walkway like that, that's one idea.
But you have the parking spaces there.
Well, you have, those are employee parkings. It's a lot less dangerous there, walking along over here and getting over than it is just walking through people filling the cars. I'm sorry. Yeah. I know, no, so I'm just saying that this, it's a safer way. So I'm not gonna try to solve the problem, but I'm telling them there is a problem, and I think they should try to solve it. And that's one way of looking at it.
It is a tight, limited space, though. I mean, we, go ahead.
I, I don't, I don't disagree with Phil, because on a couple of the stations that we did, we were pretty specific about crosswalks and walkways in the gas stations. So I, I, it may be difficult, but I, I don't, I don't disagree with Phil that it ought to be looked at, you know?
We can look into it.
The only, the only thing I see about it is, okay, so you got the two entrances, which are existing, which really have to do stay there. You got the pumps that are staying there, period. I mean, he's only taking down the two buildings and replacing the other one. I don't see how you can get there from there without jumping in front of those pocket spaces anyways, unless you wanna dotted line, you know, some kinda.
Painted walkway.
A painted walkway?
That's what the.
I mean, let's just take it, for instance, there's a number of people work in the school department there. True?
Hmm.
True, and they're back a couple of buildings. That's probably a perfect place to go over and grab a sandwich at lunchtime.
Hmm.
But it's not, because the only way you can get in is to come all the way up there, over and in.
I could probably look this up, but how high, how high is that retaining wall along Lincoln Street?
I think about three feet, or so. But I think what we can do, maybe we can extend the, the crosswalk northerly, to the right of the parking spaces, the crosswalk. Yes, and then guide them back to the crosswalk on the other side. And those parking spaces are for employees, so employees, they move during shifts, so it's not like they're coming in and out all the time, I believe, you know? So it's not like it's high traffic, even if you're walking behind it, the, the.
Yeah. Okay, so, okay, now this space right there, that green one right there, is, that part, that's part of this property?
Yeah, it is, but that, that part is five feet lower.
Oh, okay.
That's why it's, you can't, you, you'll have to build some stairs to go up, it's, it's hard.
Would it make more sense for them to put a set of stairs here than to do the people walking through, do you know what I'm saying? On this side of the parking lot, if they had a set of stairs and a walkway here, would that be better than? No, that's his property.
Oh.
I'm thinking.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
I'm thinking is, well, if he made this a walkway and, and then had a little set of stairs here, that would get rid of Phil's problem and keep everything where it is and.
I, I think, I don't know how they would feel about that, having people walking and, you know, I mean, again.
About your property.
I mean, we, we can look at this and see what we can do, maybe come up with something, and we can present it at the next meeting, or so.
And, and just remember, too, when you do this, no matter what you do, you have to get it to us seven days ahead of time, so.
Right, well, I mean, if we're going back to D. P. W. and engineering and some of the stuff that they need, I need to sit down to see what we can do at this time, because one of the comments was to kinda detail the, the extent of the infiltration system that we have on, on the site. And they don't have any records, and this is the best we can do. In order to do that, we have to expose that. You can't do that at the gas station right now. I mean, I have, we'll have to open up.
Right.
You know, so some of the things will have to be addressed during construction, or if this is gonna be an issue, I think, you know, I don't know, my, I don't know if my client is.
No, a lot of times, we'll get comments that'll say, be satisfied before a building permit, you know, before occupancy. But it's a comment from them.
Right.
It's huge. And it is something we've always kinda required.
I understand.
You know, so to move forward, we'd have to do that.
Okay.
Okay, so.
Is there any more questions from you guys?
No.
All right, I'm gonna open it up to public comment. Yeah, like C. Richards rearing to go.
No other attorneys.
Good evening, board members. Richard Serkey, I have an ownership interest in the residential property stated to be owned by Ethan Realty Trust, number two, to the left of the subject property and above the subject property. And I've talked with Mr. Chubai extensively, and we have no disagreement. I just wanted to make sure that your conditions were clear on a couple of matters. And I sent a memo, which I assume you got. The first condition was to install plantings and new fences along our common lot lines. The plantings is in finding number seven A. The fences is not, but the petitioner has agreed to, to install fencing as well. The second condition was drainage at the northern end of the subject property be adequately sized to prevent flooding onto our property, which has a high water table. That's addressed already in condition seven B and conditions fifteen through nineteen, so there's nothing further that needs to be said about that. Request number three was to relocate the dumpster a significant distance from our lot line. That's already addressed in condition number one, so nothing further needs to be done about that. And we requested that lighting of the subject property should be directed away from our property. That's already in condition number three. So the only supplement to the conditions, and it's been agreed to by the petitioner, who's been very professional throughout, is to add fences to the planting reference in finding seven A. One response to the discussion about the retaining wall, if I'm not mistaken, the retaining wall is on the petitioner's property. Right. So I'm not sure where the proposed entrance from Lincoln Street was proposed to be. I presume it was to be south of the retaining wall? I presume it was to be south of the retaining wall? Because up against the lot line is the retaining wall, and they own it, we don't. So I take it that the proposed walkway from Lincoln Street would be south of the retaining wall. Is that correct?
Yeah, it would be south of the retaining wall, but the problem is, we, we need to get stairs to, to get up to here, so. We, we don't, we can't, you know, I don't think, we can't do it, because the tanks are right there, the underground fuel tanks are in that corner, so. I don't think this is feasible, and they talked about maybe stairs here, north of the, even this is still our property, but this is gonna be kinda your backyard.
Yeah, actually. Let's not have a com.
Yes, no, I agree, I think, Mr. Chair, we understand what the issue is, I mean, the concern, we go back and try to figure out something that will get the pedestrian to the store without going through the parking lot or the gas pumps, let's say that's right.
The purpose of my comment was merely because at first glance, you might assume that the retaining wall is on the butter's property, but it isn't, it's on the petitioner's property. That's all I have to say.
You have grass out there? We'll just make the walkway, you got a lawn, we can come right through that.
There you go. Is there any other public comment? Go ahead. Yep, yes. And state your name for the record.
My name is Siobhan Foley, I live across the street, in a residential in-house. I don't even know if this is the appropriate venue to ask this question, I have no problem. It's probably gonna be a vast improvement to what, to what we have, but expanding the size of the retail and the pumps, I'm just concerned about expansion of hours, and not having a twenty-four hour gas station convenience store across the street. And I don't know if that's appropriate for this board, or if it should go in front of a different board, but that would be my concern, because you're gonna have to be open longer, because you can have an extra fifteen hundred feet, you know, basically, of the retail space. So my concern is not having a place open twenty-four hours.
So, your, your question is, is on the hours of operation?
The hours of operation, whether it would be expanded, and whether that's even appropriate for this.
Well, the hours of operation would stay what it is now, we're not. This isn't, well, actually, I don't want any discussions between the petitioner and.
Oh, okay, okay.
The hours of operation wouldn't change with us, you know, we're just, our concern is with the two buildings. He has a certain right under, you know, it's a non-conforming use. They have protection under the law, as long as he doesn't take it down and abandon it for two years, he can, you know, so they have protection on that. He's, so basically, we're just here to give him permission to put up a new building, so it doesn't change any operating hours or anything on the property that way.
So I have no problem with any of this, but if there were to be an expansion of operating hours, would they have to get permission from some other board in the town? Like, if it were to be a twenty-four hour place?
No, I would say, no, the bylaws allow that. He's in transitional commercial, I mean, you know, I don't know, your attorney, Richard?
But we can't.
I, I, the bylaws speak to that, but.
I would assume if you were gonna expand the hours, an argument could be made that you're intensifying a non-conforming use, but is the use non-conforming? Okay. We shouldn't be asking Richard the deal here, Richard, you don't have to ask.
Yeah. Go ahead, then.
So, if they wanna change the hours, they'd have to ask, they'd be, they'd have to set forth, because it'd be, it's a non-conforming use, and they're making it a greater intensification of the non-conforming use. So it's not in front of us that they're gonna be changing the hours, so I think that would be a condition that we would address. If, just like, how many.
I don't think we could address the hour, we're not. Colleen?
Let's ask, why don't we ask the petitioner if they plan on changing the hours?
Go ahead, do you plan on changing the hours?
Should I sit down?
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, I'm not aware of any changes to the hours, and unfortunately, the, my client was gonna be here tonight, but something happened, he had to take his mark to the emergency or something, so he just texted me, but I don't think there's any expansion, and hours is what's allowed in the, in the zoning district area, and so it's, it is what it is. And there'll be no expansion of the gas pumps either, just to answer your question, so, it's just, the store is, we're making the store a little bit bigger. And again, just to give you an idea, the store is two thousand square feet, I mean, by the time you take the two bathrooms handicapped accessible bathroom, and, and the coolers, and the utilities, your retail really is not that big, you know, just to give you, to put it in perspective, this is almost like half of the size of a Cumberland Farms, or even less than that, you know, so.
Okay, any other questions from the public?
My name is Crystal Dool, I have a property at the bottom of South Street, and that intersection is very busy with school, and two entrance exit to the station, which currently, you're not having people driving in there to access a convenience store. Was there any consideration taken as to now you're adding a bigger business? Because right now, I see people just walking to get cigarettes or whatever, but now you're gonna have people parking to go into the convenience store, and that intersection gets really backed up, I'm wondering if there was any consideration in terms of the additional traffic flow of actual cars coming in and out. It's one thing to have the pumps, because you don't have cars that are going there other than to access the gas. It's a tight area.
He'll, he'll answer it afterwards if he feels it addresses, because we don't allow interaction between.
Right, okay.
Do you wanna address it?
Uh, yeah, if you don't mind. Yep. Well, yes, we did look, I, I think we did submit a traffic analysis with our submissions, and the addition from the convenience store is not adding a lot of traffic, I mean, we looked at the ITE, we all know, gas stations are not traffic destinations, what it means, you don't drive around from nearby towns just to go to the gas station. You're there, either you're going to work, or you're coming back from school, whatever, you, you, you drive by, and we get most of the traffic from the pass-by traffic, and I'm sure you, you've had other gas stations in town, and they had to come in front of you. In terms of the two driveways, unfortunately, you look at the site, and you look at the access, you can't possibly do anything there without leaving those two driveways the way they are. You can't get fuel delivery, or you can't get a fire truck, and unfortunately, it is what it is, it's a tight site. We understand that, you know, we're not fortunate to have a two-acre site that we can work with and do what we need to do, but again, you know, we're expanding in existing non-conforming use, I understand, and that's why we're here, but we have to keep in mind that it's not a huge expansion, we're taking two buildings down, we're building a smaller building, and to make the tight, the site more efficient in, in terms of circulation and that. But we did look at the traffic, it's not, we're not adding a lot of traffic, hardly any traffic. And with the peak, I understand, this came up to, with, fortunately, the, the peak hour for school is in the afternoon, which is really that time for the gas stations, we all know, the peak hour for the gas station is around five o'clock in the afternoon. This is when people coming home from work, when they get their gas, they get their milk, cigarettes, whatever, you know, stuff that they buy from the convenience store, so it's not, which is a good thing, so. With the timing, between the peak hours, so.
Okay, any other comments from the public? Okay, so we're gonna have to look at a continuous day, what do we have?
Hal, how long do you think you need for?
I think this should, being realistic, this is gonna be at least another month, I think so, so.
To see the board, or to get the plans back to us?
And I'd have to get the plans, yeah, but, so when is your meetings, and?
In, I'd say June third, probably too quick, so either June seventeenth.
June seventeen?
July first.
July first, I think it's more appropriate.
July first?
Because that gives us time to, you know, talk to the different, you know, and I, if I need to sign any extensions, whatever, we don't have.
I can send that to you if I need it.
Yeah, you would have to sign.
Oh, absolutely.
July first, then.
Okay, July first.
So a lot of times, we don't have meetings around July fourth.
July fourth is on Thursday.
So I don't think I'll be here on July first.
Okay, so what do we have after?
After that's July fifteenth.
July fifteenth? Okay.
Okay.
You okay with that?
So do I hear a motion to continue this till July fifteenth?
Make a motion to continue to July fifteenth.
Second? Kevin? Okay, and all in favor? Okay.
Thank you.
Who thinks ahead?
Okay.
Fifteenth.
Okay. All right, now we're gonna move on to the next case, which is four one twenty-four, Poyant Signs.
Case number forty-one twenty-four, the Plymouth Zoni Board of Appeals on the Zoni Bar Law will hold a public hearing in the Great Hall, Town Hall, Twenty-Sixth Court Street, Plymouth, Mass., on Monday, May sixth, twenty twenty-four, at seven P M. To hear the petition of Poyant Signs requesting a special permit required per section two oh three dash three D one, Table one, to waive number of allowed secondary architectural facade signs to install one secondary facade on the property of Seventeen Commerce Way, shown as Lot thirty-two on Plat one oh five of the assessor's map dated January one, twenty twenty-three, in a G C zone. The petitioner or his or her representative, and any other person desiring to be heard on this matter, should appear at the time and place designated.
Okay, sitting on this case, we, Mr. Ricardi, Mr. Connor, Mr. Conroy, yeah, Kavanaugh Riley, and myself. Do I hear, who's presenting, oh, there we go.
Good evening, I'm Bethany Leonard with Poyant Signs, one twenty-five Samuel Barnett Boulevard, New Bedford, and I'm here on behalf of Cape Cod Five. So we are here asking for one additional halo illuminated set of channel letters. They do have two sets installed on the north side of the building near the main entrance. We are asking for one set, the same identical sign that is on the opposite side, to be installed on the south side wing wall of the building. Main reason is if you are coming, if you're turning onto Commerce from Carver Road, which is up where Market Basket is, and coming down, there's currently no visibility of the brand. The bank itself blocks the signage that's on the other side, so you end up, would miss the driveway. So this gives more visibility on Commerce Way to be able to take that right-hand turn into the bank parking lot, and not drive by it and have to go around. In addition, we are also proposing two directional signs. We have gone in front of planning, asking for monuments, they did make a recommendation to change them to non-illuminated directional signs, we took their recommendation and did submit revised plans for those. They're on the screen right now, we did keep the Cape Cod Five Bank logo and the word entrance within five square feet or less, which was their recommendation, and then did keep the address number. These would go at both the entrances, there's currently two entrances going into the blank property. One on Commerce, and then one is a back entrance, I know Colleen's gonna pull it up, to make it a little easier. So the two green dots, so you can see it at the bottom, and then up at the top, that is where we are proposing to put these. That just gives a better line of sight, so you do know which driveway you are turning into to get to the bank property. There is a current monument sign that is on Commerce before you get to the bank, but if you turn into that, you have no access to the bank, that driveway only goes to like where Polish Nails, Charles Schwab, Bay Coast, and then there's no direct access into the property of Cape Cod Five, if they were to put a tenant panel on that sign. That is why we are proposing a small directional, it's four feet eleven overall height. Again, the logo itself is contained within a five-square-foot area, which is what is recommended in the square footage for text within a directional sign. That's basically the signs we are asking for, but I'm happy to answer any questions anybody has.
So, one question I have, though, is kinda the signs for the drive-through, why are they so tall? And where do those actually sit?
For the drive-through area?
The, one of them here, hold on a second. The ones that, they're down to almost nine feet.
Mike? You might be talking about our original, our original designs that we went in front of planning with, and then they made recommendations for us to reduce them, so I think you're talking about these that had the drive-through? So we took planning's recommendations and reduced those to the updated plans that were on the screen, that are four feet eleven, no illumination. Yeah, we just resubmitted the new plans last week. Yeah, those are, those are more, more monument signs, and that's why we went with planning's, planning's recommendations, and reduced them to what they had asked us to do. And they do not have any illumination either.
Okay, well, I know they did, they do, just at the top, they have a sign light down.
The old one did, the new one has no illumination, they're completely non-illuminated.
Okay, all right. Any other questions from? Okay, so I'm gonna go to the public, any public comment? Okay, then I'm back to the board.
You want a motion?
Yep, I'm looking for a motion.
I make a motion that we approve the request in case forty-one twenty-four to waive the number of allowed secondary signs.
Okay, and the conditions. And they're just standard conditions, okay. All those in favor? Okay, unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so, now we having some informal business, I gather that's you, Mark?
Good evening, Mark Flaherty for McGreyco in Rickvale. We're here tonight to indicate to, that we, we feel that the GPW comments have been satisfied for the project. There's a few housekeeping items, such as, we are to return to the, the water department any kind of meters that are being abandoned. We need a hydrant flow test, but we can't do the hydrant flow test until the water street construction is done, and that's, so it's gonna be done within a week, so we have a, the engineer for the hydrant flow test in the wings. We have a, the engineer for the hydrant flow test in the wings waiting for Peter, Peter Gordon and Kendra Martin at the Engineering Department to say it's okay to begin the hydrant flow test. We don't anticipate any issues with the, with the flow test. So we're here tonight just for the satisfaction of Condition Number Five, that which return to the C P A, indicating that all the comments have been satisfied by the GPW, and they have been. Thank you.
All right, so I'm going to have to name somebody because, uh, Mike isn't here.
Okay.
Well, we can just go with the four that were here.
Sure.
So that's fine, okay. So I think Pete, were you on that one?
Not here.
Was that?
I was on.
You were on it?
Of course I was on.
Myself and was Phil on, Tommy?
You were on that one? So, uh, Tom was...
Okay.
Everybody's here.
All right, so we'll use Phil. There's the four, okay.
I think he said one.
Oh, you did say one?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. All right, so we have the four.
Colleen's got it, yeah.
Okay.
That's what I said.
All right, there we go.
I'll speak louder next time.
All right, no, that's okay.
Press that button.
Yeah, press that button. Okay, so, I heard, had a motion to accept it?
I make a motion to accept.
Okay, a second. All in favor?
Yeah, thank you.
Who's the second? Who's, who's Michael Wharton? Okay. Everything with Michael means white, bitch, you know, okay?
No.
She's on. Well, she's on. She's on. Well, she's on. 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 She's on.
So, motion to adjourn?
Let's go see the votes.
Okay.
I, I didn't hear a second.
We're adjourned.
We didn't vote.
We're all in favor.